Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Chatham Board of Selectmen. This is Tuesday, October 13th at 6:00 PM. This is a remote participation only. As you'll note, the links are available in our agenda. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 23rd, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Chatham Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 508-945-4410 and conference ID 134208476, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as we're able. Okay, I'd like to welcome the board and take a roll call. I just want to note that Selectman Kokolos won't be joining us this evening, hoping he's viewing this on public access television. Okay, so let's take a roll. Selectman Metters.
Present.
Selectman Castro.
Present.
Selectman Dykens.
Present.
And the chair is present. Okay. I just want to let people know that if you are not speaking or making a presentation at this time, we would appreciate that you disable your video and mute your microphones so that we may be able to, as a board, see each other and conduct our business accordingly. Thank you. Our first order of business tonight is acceptance of the meeting minutes for two meetings, September 29, 2020, and October 6, 2020. Do I have a motion to accept the September 29, 2020, meeting minutes?
No move.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, any edits or additions to the minutes?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Page eight, up at the top, second line, where it says, the end of that sentence, during a pandemic for a personal interest, I'd like to strike a personal interest and substitute a development project.
Okay.
There it is.
Thank you. Anything else, Dean?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any other additions or edits?
No.
Nothing? Okay, we'll take a motion to accept the meeting minutes as amended?
I think we're so moved.
Oh, we did already? I'm so sorry. We'll take a roll call. Okay, Dean?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay, thanks for keeping me straight, Dean. All right. Do we have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of October 16, 2020?
No move.
Second? Okay. Any additions or edits to this October 6 meeting? Dean and then Cory.
Madam Chair, I have one edit, but it's a long one. It's on page three.
Okay, Shawna, you ready? Go ahead.
Okay, let me just, getting a phone call, I'm here. Let me just say, it's the second, it's under C, small i, the middle paragraph where it says, it was suggested that a charter provision be considered which would allow, I want to strike the phrase "the board," and then, please, wait a minute.
I talked to Charlie and--
Hold on just a minute.
I'm gonna have to call you back. I'm on a meeting right now. Or leave a message.
That's all right.
Okay.
You called long.
All right, bye. Bye, thank you. Sorry about that.
No worries.
Contractor. This is how I'd like it to read. It was suggested that a charter provision be considered which would allow some mechanism to require board approval by majority vote for a petition special town meeting to go forward during an officially declared public emergency, period. That's what I believe I said. Let me repeat that. Shawna? It was suggested that a charter provision be considered which would allow some mechanism to require board approval by majority vote for a petition special town meeting to go forward during an officially declared public emergency. That's the edit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other edits or amendments to this? None? Okay, we'll take a vote to approve. Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Okay, and the chair says aye. Okay. I just want to remind people again that if you are not presenting or speaking, to please disable your video and mute your microphone. We appreciate that so that we can conduct business, and at the appropriate time, we'll call on you. All right, I just want to review what we're going to be doing tonight. We're going to have public announcements and agenda item requests coming up next, and then we'll have new business and discuss the coronavirus and certain aspects of the Halloween celebration. And then we'll move on to, and that's part of our new business, and then we'll move on to public comments. And those public comments will be related to items in the business agenda, and five minutes per person is allowed, up to five minutes to speak per person. And then we'll go through the meeting agenda, business, regular business agenda, and then again, we will have public comments related to the business agenda items and allow up to five minutes per speaker at the end of the meeting. Okay, so agenda, now we're on to public announcements, and I just want to state that today is the 13th. In-person voting starts in Chatham and across Massachusetts, Saturday, October 17th to Friday, October 30th. And our early voting is, in-person early voting is Chatham Community Center at 702 Main Street. There are specific hours for the weekends, 9:00 to 1:00, and then during the weekdays, 9:00 to 3:00 PM. Of course, proper COVID protocol will apply, masking and whatnot. Also, the last day to register to vote and to change your enrollment for a state election is Saturday, October 21st, 2020. And the last day to apply for an early vote ballot by mail before the state election is Wednesday, October 28th, 2020, by 5:00 PM. And of course, regular voting will take place on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. Saying that, does any of the other board members have public announcements or agenda item requests? Okay, everybody, okay? Before we go further, I'm going to ask if the public does. I know that town manager has something. I have a hand up from a Carol for an agenda item request or a public announcement. Carol?
Hi, good evening. It's Carol Bliss from West Chatham.
Hi, Carol.
Last winter, the last time the public heard from the Airport Commission, there was the promise of alternative options in the AMPU to address residents' concerns. To date, the public has not heard from the Airport Commission, other than to see a surprise newspaper article about an FAA grant that seems to assume a finalized town-approved AMPU. Despite the Board of Selectmen asking for ongoing updates, we have been in the dark for over seven months. Therefore, I am requesting a thorough update on the AMPU from the Airport Commission at the next Board of Selectmen meeting. I hope I did this correctly, asking for an agenda. Thank you.
You did, yes. Except we do not, request on the time is at the prerogative of the board.
Okay, sorry.
That's quite okay. And we have, Elaine Gibbs has an agenda item request or a public announcement. Elaine?
Yes, I was just wondering if, from now on, moving forward, that we could have a weekly update on the West Chatham corridor. We had been told that there was going to be two-way traffic at all times, and I think anybody who's gone down there knows that's not the case, that at times there are no lanes open when they're moving material, but no more than one lane. I think it's really important for the businesses and for people who are just trying to get to their jobs. If things are going to be closed, we need to know it. And once a week, but also if it can be on the town website, that for whatever reason, like tomorrow, it may be totally blocked for a while so that people aren't late for appointments. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other agenda item requests or public announcements from the remote participants? Okay, Jill? And I guess we'll go with Jill first, and go ahead, Jill. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I wanted to, along with Tom Temple, to provide the board an update on the Main Street sidewalk improvement project. And I know that there's been a lot of concerns expressed by merchants and information and emails over the weekend, so I just wanted to provide the board an update. So, the project is scheduled to start on Monday, October 26th, and the hours of work would be from 7:00 to, I'm sorry, I just lost my place, 7:00 AM, Monday through Friday, to 3:30 PM. And the contractor has guaranteed pedestrian access and access to the businesses. The contractor is Lawrence Lynch. They're the firm, the contractor who did the lower Main Street sidewalk improvement program as well. And they're going to station and stage their vehicles behind the orpheum in a certain designated area towards the back of the parking lot, so it won't be on-street for the materials. And they're expected to clean up at the end of the day so that there would be, it's like a compressed gravel, so people can walk on the sidewalks. And again, pedestrian safety is the prevailing goal for this project. So, what we know is that it was expected to take 10 weeks to get us through mid-December. This two-week delay in the start, which really isn't a delay, it's only a delay to the schedule, would then hopefully still provide us to finish the project by mid-December. And doing that is also contingent on weather, but more importantly, to try to get the project done while the asphalt plants are still open. The project's scope is from Library Lane westward to the library, I'm sorry, to the Rotary, and then eastward, the Rotary, back to Frost Street. I think that's, I know that Tom Temple had a couple of graphics. I don't know if he's on the call yet. On-street parking will be available but limited in the project segments that the contractor will be working. And what they'll do is, whatever they can to keep, oh, there's Tom, whatever we can to keep parking available will certainly be made, and we also have our Town Hall parking lot here. Tom, was there anything that I missed?
No, good evening, everybody. No, you hit most of the important items. The only thing that was missing was the contractor plans to have his workers utilize that back portion near the pumping station behind the orpheum where the materials will be kept. His workers will be parking their vehicles there. The only areas where you'll see Lawrence Lynch's equipment is adjacent to the sidewalk areas that they're actually working on that day. As they move down from the areas that they're working, you'll notice that they're going to be closing down behind them, the coned areas and the barrel areas, reducing the areas of their limit of work as they move westerly to stop the project. As Jill indicated, we're still anticipating, weather permitting, that we should be able to get both sidewalks done by this contractor. Lawrence Lynch did a great job last year for us. You may recall, he did 5,200 feet, just over a mile worth of sidewalks for the town on Main Street, from Lighthouse Beach all the way to just before Chatham-Baz Ave. And he did 26 ramps this year. There's 14 handicap ramps with delineators, as well as the 1,720 feet. So, far less disturbance for the sidewalk reconstruction, but it is something I think it's important to get it in at this time, you know, especially starting in October. I think we should be able to hit our mark and get that whole area straightened out before the onset of winter.
Yeah, and consideration for this schedule, we know there's no tour buses coming this year, and I know that the businesses have been impacted, and I think I'm pretty hopeful that things will hopefully get back. If we were to postpone this until late spring, early summer, we'd have to finish really by June because of the limitations that we have for it. The orpheum might be open, hopefully, and there might be other activities. So, this was some of the reasoning we thought for moving forward with it, and we're happy to hear from the Board of Selectmen and the public, any concerns. I just want to caution the board that this is not a scheduled agenda item, so we're doing it under public announcements, understanding that I did talk to Mary from the chamber, and she did send out an email blast that I would be providing this update to the board in case someone wanted to speak in public comments.
Okay, well, we can address it in public comments. If it is an unusual situation, this came up over the weekend, became an issue. So, I'm just wondering if there's any informational questions that the board has. It's unusual, but I would allow some informational questions if you guys have any. Go ahead, Cory.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to tread very lightly, as this is not a specific agenda item, and also for full disclosure, if anyone is not aware, I'm a Main Street merchant. I own a business, I own a building on Main Street, so, which is within this scope of work. I guess the observation, I guess my question will be, my concern is for the process of the communication that has come to this project, because the letters were just sent out on Thursday and Friday to property owners. So, tenants were finding out about it over the weekend from their landlords, et cetera, et cetera. So, will the contractor be kind of reaching out to each merchant to kind of specify, you know, during this block of the project? You know, obviously, they're not going to be doing Library Lane up to the Rotary all one day. It's a 10-week project. So, as each segment is addressed, will they be reaching out to whatever business or businesses will be immediately impacted during that particular window? I guess is what my question.
Yeah, I think what they'll do is when they see the residents in that area or the merchants, what they'll do is they'll let them know that, listen, if you're trying to get your car out tomorrow while they're working in this area. And Lawrence Lynch is really good. They'll stop and make sure that the people can get in and out while they're doing, setting the gravel and doing the excavation in that specific area. But, once they're done, you're going to have full access to all the driveways, to all the business, you know, walkways and ramps and stairs, et cetera. They're going to, the first day, they're planning on just saw-cutting the roadway on heading westerly and then heading easterly. Then, on the 28th, they'll start at Library Lane and start working their way down. So, as they work their way down, they'll do small segments, but as they're going, they're going to be ramping every single, you know, walkway, et cetera, to each of the residents so people have full access the whole time. To answer your question, you know, when they see the residents, they'll let them know, you know, where they are, where they're going to be up to, and, you know, potentially, you know, the projection that they'll have in the next couple of days where they'll be. So, they start at 7:00 in the morning, and they're gone by 3:30. So, you know, if anybody has any questions, the super on the job is very nice. He'll go ahead and he'll stop, and if you see somebody walking by from one of the establishments, he'll go up to you and make sure that you're squared away with your, any issues you might have with the property.
Okay, I guess my closing comment is, I just wish we could have communicated this in a more efficient manner, because the letters coming out before the weekend kind of caused a little bit of a stir over the weekend, the long weekend. So, this is where we are. I know we've all received some emails and phone calls, et cetera, et cetera. So, I just hope that we can make this as efficient as possible, and I'll step away from now.
Cory, I think it's important that, maybe that we continue the conversation for an agenda item going forward for next week with the idea of what would be a comprehensive outline of outreach to the businesses. I think that might be a helpful way to do it, as far as what the town's going to do, as well as the contractor, to, you know, just to outline it. I think that that would be a best approach to this.
I'd welcome an agenda item next week to kind of--
Okay.
--stay the conversation. I would love that.
I think, okay, that would be great. All right, we'll do that. Any other board informative or questions, informational questions? None? All right. Okay.
Madam Chairman, just one more thing. So, we're going to work closely with Mary from the chamber, and we're going to participate on their Zoom meetings. I know there's one coming up. I think it's tomorrow. And then we can certainly participate on those weekly meetings, and then have a more enhanced website, so it's web page for the project, so that we can do some breaking news of where the contractor's going to be. This contractor works pretty quick, so certainly Tom and I will work as closely as we can to notify the businesses of the next section, but we'll do something on the website so it's accessible 24/7.
Okay. All right. Okay. So, I have a question from Mary Kavanaugh. I'm going to allow, if it's an informational question, Mary. Otherwise, we'll have this on the agenda next week.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to clarify what Jill just said. So, our merchant meeting is actually Thursday morning, not tomorrow. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that.
Okay, thanks, Mary.
Yep.
All right. Okay, anything else, Jill? On this matter? Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Yep, you too. Okay, so any other public announcements or agenda item requests?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Our Director of Finance, I'm sorry, just yelling out your first name. I'm so sorry. I'm seeing first names. The Director of Finance, Alex Hala.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Alex Hala, Finance Director. I just want to remind everyone on the call that the tax bills for FY 2021 have been sent out. They were mailed out on October 1st. They're due November 2nd. If you have not received a tax bill yet, please contact the Treasurer's Office at I'd also like to let the public know that you can pay online through our website. We also have a drop box at 549 Main Street where you can pay by check, and if you include a self-addressed stamped envelope in the bottom portion of your tax bill, the tax collector will receive that and send it back to you. So, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Alex. All right, we're going to move on to new business, and our first order of business is where we do allow some questions from the public. We pulled this out of our business agenda. This is new business. This is a coronavirus COVID-19 update from Dr. Dunkinson, Director of Natural Resources, and then from our town manager. One of the things we're going to be talking about is the protocols and status for Halloween and other town events under the COVID emergency through December 31st, 2020. Dr. Dunkinson, I'm sure you have a few other items you need to bring forward as well.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, just a quick run-through of this week's numbers, so everybody's kind of got the sense of where we're at. Right now, worldwide, we are at a little over 37.9 million cases and a little over 1 million deaths worldwide. In the U.S., we currently have a little over 7.8 million cases, and we have over 215,000 deaths in the United States. And as I've indicated the last couple of weeks, India is now rapidly catching up on the U.S. As of earlier today, India was at 7.1 million cases. The U.S. has been number one in both cases and deaths for, you know, since last spring, but India is rapidly catching up, at least in the number of cases. The U.S. still has twice as many deaths as India does, but as we've talked about before, deaths tend to lag behind cases by, you know, two to three weeks. In Massachusetts, as of 4 o'clock this afternoon, we had 140,412 cases, and that is up roughly 4,500 cases since last, this time, last week. In deaths, we are currently at 9,630, and that's an increase of 92 deaths in Massachusetts since last week. In Barnstable County, we currently have 1,878 confirmed cases, which is up approximately 46 since last week. 46 since last week. And we have 178 confirmed and probable deaths related to COVID-19 in Barnstable, and that's up four since last week. In Chatham, we currently have 34 cumulative cases, and that is actually down one since I reported last week. And that is because as contract tracing with VNA gets, you know, when they actively start digging into a case, occasionally, we get a case reported to us, but then it turns out the individual is not currently residing in Chatham, and that's what happened in this case. We did have a case that was initially reported to us, but they're not currently residing in Chatham. And then we have, we still have, not still, but luckily, we still have the same two deaths that we've had since the beginning of this. So I'm happy to report there have been no additional deaths, confirmed deaths, due to COVID-19 from Chatham residents. I do want to report that we do have an incident at Chatham Elementary School. We had a positive case reported to us, but through additional contact tracing, the individual involved is not a Chatham resident, but does involve Chatham Elementary School. The entire class has been notified, and they will be quarantining for the next 14 days. VNA, as well as the school nurses at Montemoy, are following up. And as I said, the entire class that this individual was involved in will be self-quarantined. We've also been in touch with Montemoy Community Services and the Park Program. Just as a precaution, we know that the individual who's positive was not attending that. But because we have the entire class of elementary school students being quarantined, we wanted to make sure that they were also quarantining from any after-school activities, which they are. So between the two towns, the VNA, Montemoy Regional School District, all the appropriate steps have been taken, and the situation, I won't want to say is well in hand, but it's being addressed as appropriately it should be under both state and CDC guidelines. And then just one thing else I wanted to mention, because I know Jill's going to speak or the board's going to speak to the Halloween issue. But on our DPH call, our Department of Public Health call this afternoon, one of the things they did talk about that I'm sure everybody's interested in is, you know, we talk about these clusters of cases, and there's always interest in, you know, are they originating from restaurants, schools? And so DPH finally had a little bit of breathing room, and they were able to look at some of the data over the last several months. And the biggest clusters of cases, meaning the most in terms of numbers, are still attributed to long-term care facilities. But the second-largest number of cases creating a cluster are household contacts. So that just reinforces the fact that, you know, what you do in your own home, what your family does in terms of not attending, you know, events with other people that are not part of your immediate family, you know, going to barbecues, going out to sporting events and things like that, are the appropriate things not to be doing, because the second-largest number of cases, clusters, have been attributed to households. And then just the final thing I wanted to mention, with Shereen maybe mentioning as part of any updates from the county, the governor has extended the eviction assistance program, as well as increasing the amount of money that's in there, up around 177 million. So that is being rolled out as we speak. There's a variety of different subprograms in that. So anyone who's having trouble with the potential for eviction or anything like that, I would strong urge they go onto the state's website and look at those various programs and assistance, because some of the restrictions on evictions are going to end towards the end of this month. So if people need financial assistance, that is available out there now. So with that, that's all I've got, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bob. One of the things that, when I was on the county health call this morning with the reopening tax force, we mentioned that there's a fluctuation of increase in the state of Massachusetts and whatnot, but it doesn't seem to be a steady uptick yet. But there is concern that we're on a rise. So I think it's the whole idea of reinforcing personal protection is really key to us doing what we should be doing, listening to our own doctors and to our county health officials on what should be, about masks and social distancing and what else. Also seems to be a red classification increase in the state. I know Plymouth now is considered a red classification. Other than that, I don't have any questions for you, Bob. Does the board have any questions for Bob at this time? None? Any of the remote participants have questions? I see one hand raised, and that's Elaine Gibbs. Go ahead, Elaine.
Yes, this is just for clarification in terms of the elementary school. I guess I don't understand what the connection is. I don't think it was students or staff, but it was someone, if you could let us know, someone that came into the school? Or was it a relative, a non-resident relative of someone in the school? Because I think the parents need to know if it was super close contact or, you know, something else.
It was a student.
So a child has COVID in the school?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Dunkinson from the remote participants? Jeff, your hands up. Jeffrey?
Yeah, just a comment, I guess. Nationally, Massachusetts was at least, according to the map this morning, kind of holding steady. So we may have clusters and masks that are red, but on a national basis, Massachusetts at least is holding steady. Boy, there are a lot of states that aren't. A lot of states are struggling, and it's Midwest and Upper Midwest, and it's really interesting what's going on, kind of rolling outbreaks, if you will. So, and I just want to emphasize the point that's repeatedly made by our Board of Health, by Dr. Bob and others, but, you know, a lot of this stuff really boils down to being, you know, personally responsible, whether that's your own person and/or your household and/or your circle of friends and/or your coworkers. It's just doing the things that are supposed to be done correctly that Dr. Fauci has emphasized and others have not emphasized, which is wearing a mask, being socially distant. If you can't be socially distant, particularly wear a mask and to, you know, abide by hand washing and other strictures. So just being socially responsible and aware of your surroundings and your household surroundings. And there's some personal responsibility here, and I think we need to keep emphasizing it until we can, you know, get a therapeutic that cures, you know, helps to decrease the amount of hospitalization and/or the symptoms and/or when we get a vaccine. So this thing's hanging around longer than we all want it, but, and we're going to get tired of it, but it's still important to be socially, you know, responsible. And I'll emphasize it, and I'll continue to emphasize it. So thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments from the remote participants or the board? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Dunkinson.
You're welcome.
Okay. Our next update is from our Town Manager, Jill Goldsmith. Jill?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So I don't have anything to report as it relates to town staff, but I did want to address what's in the packet relating to Halloween. So do you want to just flow into that right now?
That would be super. Thanks.
Okay, great. So we had a conversation today. I invited Teresa from Montemoy Community Services. We invited the principal from Chatham Elementary School and as well as our Public Safety Chiefs, Dr. Bob, myself, and Chairman Davis, as well as Shawna. And we wanted to talk about if there could potentially be some kind of local alternative to trick-or-treating or to Halloween. And as you might know, all the fun programs that Montemoy Community Services does with, you know, the kids walking down Main Street in their costumes and everything, that's not going to occur. So we were trying to figure out if there's a potential that we could do something. And also, I was contacted, and probably you have been as well, by residents in certain neighborhoods, you know, asking questions about what the town's position is for trick-or-treating and would they be provided any assistance with maybe, you know, traffic control or pedestrian traffic? And we talked a lot about personal responsibility as well. So I just wanted to throw that. I don't have an answer, but we're just trying to think of if there's a way we can do something on Halloween, maybe late afternoon. And since that discussion, we've just been searching some of the social media posts, and I know there's other activities that are planned. But, so anyway, I wanted to throw that out, and Chairman Davis, if you wanted to parlay anything as well, go right ahead.
Okay. All right. So we did add into the packet the CDC's recommended updates for trick-or-treating and for neighborhoods. And I guess they've been even more updated today, basically giving people some guidelines that maybe, that we can post on our website. And when we were talking about alternatives to the trick-or-treating concept, you know, we did reach out to some of the neighborhoods to see what some of the plans are and, you know, how we can sort of mitigate a lot of people going into neighborhoods and with, you know, kids just going to want to go trick-or-treating, and, you know, kids and candy, it can be a little crazy. So we reached out, what Jill had said, and looked at other community events. We know in town, there's a couple of things happening with some nonprofits that they're holding afternoon events, as well as a local business up in South Chatham is doing a sort of a Santa meets trick-or-treating drive-through sort of event. And so there's a couple of things happening on the community level. Looking at what other communities are doing, Harwich is doing a drive-through trick-or-treat at their community center, and it was brought up that maybe that might be a possibility for us to do sort of a trunk-and-treat scenario where people could drive through the community center, costumes and have volunteers sort of give out candy. Also, the idea of doing maybe something at Veterans Field was talked about, that would be a very controlled environment where kids could go through and get candy from different, you know, neighborhood people or tables that were set up. There was no real answer to any of this. Jill had looked at the timetable on whether there's availability at the community center for a public event, and there is, the building is available, though there is the early voting registration, I mean, early voting that occurs. But I think that's at a certain time of the day on the weekends. Anyway, just wanted to-
This is for outdoors, so the community center complex outdoors, not inside?
Outdoors, no, no, I know, it's outdoors. I'm sorry, it is outdoors. But I just wanted to say there would be something else going on inside the building. Sorry. So I just wanted to throw it out there to see if there was a flavor for anything like this. As I said, I think neighborhoods are still going to do their own thing. They're going to probably set up and put candy in the driveway, on tables or trays, and, you know, do all kinds of social distancing like we've recommended. But I just wanted to know if the board had any flavor for a public activity that was somewhat sponsored by the town. Cory, your hands up. Cory? You're muted, Cory.
All right, better now. All right. No, I'm wide open to ideas that, you know, could, you know, address this this year's Halloween. Going back to the comment about a trunk-or-treat or something about the community center, obviously outside, traffic-wise, that could probably be a little bit of an interesting scenario. If we were to ever pursue anything like that, wouldn't it be better off maybe using like the middle school, basically the drop-off line? Anyone who has a student there, the drop-off line wraps all around the school. You could almost do a better flow of traffic and spread things out with the parking lots and the exterior of the building and whatever. That might be more viable for some type of project like that, if you get a good crowd and traffic control. So I would suggest that if there's an appetite for something on that idea as an alternative site. The one thing I do want to kind of throw out there is, you know, Halloween falls on a Saturday this year, and, you know, in the back of my mind, I'm trying to figure out what to do with the Alkona neighborhood, because I think people are going to go. I know each of the residents are going to be at their own discretion, whether they're going to decorate and participate or not this year. But I think we do need to recognize that that has been a huge gathering place in the past, and I think the responsible thing to do is have some kind of resources to assist in some way fired police to make that, you know, as safe as possible, recognizing, I think there will be a draw for some people, whether they realize it's at whatever capacity it is this year, I don't know. But I do think we need to kind of address that for the benefit of the neighbors, at least. So if there's alternative ideas out there, I'm wide open to doing something. I know the kids, you know, are all looking to try to do things. I know parents are brainstorming. There's things out on Facebook, you know, with different ideas, you know, what are you doing, what are you not doing? So if we can come up with some kind of safe alternatives, I'm all game.
So, thanks, Cory. The, a couple of things. There isn't the big candy fundraising drive that usually goes on. That's not occurring for that neighborhood this year. So there might be not as much supply for the demand. But I also know that, you know, a lot of parents are planning other alternative activities and taking personal responsibility in the whole idea. And that's what I'd like to see people encourage, that they're creating the activities within their own environment and being safe what they do. The idea of Montemoy School, because of that drop-off line and what you said, it sounds like a good idea, better than probably the community center, even though you still have that same sort of roundabout kind of scenario. You just wouldn't be plugging up downtown with cars waiting. It might be a little disruptive to the neighborhood, but that might be something we could find out from the district, whether the school could be available for an activity like that. But any other thoughts from the board? Jeffrey?
Yeah, I thought Cory's idea of using the school is a good one. It's better, it's a better flow, and you can hit a more traffic.
Okay. Dean, any thoughts?
No, I would agree with what Jeff and Cory said.
So the idea was to put together a small committee and work very fast to organize something if we were to go ahead. There's not a lot of time to something like this, but we can certainly continue the conversation. Jill, any thoughts?
I think, like you said, it'll be a pretty quick turnaround, so we can follow up with the schools and see. I know there's a lot of people out there who would donate funds for candy. I know in speaking with the fire chief and deputy police chief about, you know, wanting to assist. So I think we're there. It's just a matter of trying to figure out something that allows us to abide by the CDC guidelines and doesn't cause a traffic jam. So I really like the idea about the middle school, so certainly follow up on that.
Okay. We can follow up and continue the conversation. We have another week before we have to make an announcement, and we might have better information going forward with what the community is up to. Maybe there's other events and whatnot. Is there any questions from the remote participants or comments on this? I don't see any at this time. All right. Next steps, Jill? We'll just move forward with a planning process?
Right, and we'll report back hopefully at the next meeting, which is getting kind of close. It's the 20th, if not before then. We can certainly do press releases and so forth. So this is a priority, and we'll try to get everything finalized by the end of this week.
Okay. All right. In the meantime, Jill, we'll be able to put the CDC's updated guidelines on our website and get it out in some sort of community update and to the schools as well on the trick-or-treat, Halloween.
Yeah, they released some new and better graphics, and I know the items come in multiple languages, so make sure we get that out, too.
Great. All right. Anything else from you guys? All right. Okay, thank you. Jill, anything else from you? No? Okay. All right, thanks. Okay. Our next order of business is to take public comments related to the items in our business agenda. This will be a time when you are allowed to speak to our issues that we're working on. Please mute. Please mute your videos and audios, please. We're getting some feedback. This is where you can speak to the meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust discussion, mooring management system, the review of the open meeting law violation complaint, the citizens' agenda request for clarification of a working group, and the Cape Cod Climate Action Plan municipal meeting designating a Chatham representative. So I'm going to take a show of hands, a roll of the participants and- So, I'm gonna take a show of hands, a roll of the, of the participants, and then I will call on you, so if you are on the phone, you may speak out and say your name, and I'll add you to my list, and then I'll call on you. Anybody who's on the phone that would like to speak during the public comment period? Alright, anybody in our remote participation that have their hands raised, I'm going to note that James Fulton and Elaine Gibbs, is there anybody else? Either raise your hand or speak out, please? Okay, alright.
Hey.
Did, did I just hear somebody? Steven?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll add you to the list.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, the first person is James Fulton, James?
First, James. James Fulton? James? James? Hi.
Hi, if you can just hold on just a second, I'm going to ask that if you have, please mute your mics and if you're not participating, and if you are in a scenario where you are looking at your computer and on the phone, you need to disable one of them, we can't have both on, we get feedback, okay? Go ahead, James, welcome.
Good evening, first of all, my name is Jim Fulton, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for your public service to the people of Chatham. Being on the Board of Selectmen is not an easy job, and I know that. I presume that rather than speak at the time you take up Item C3, you'd like me to speak now or forever hold my peace?
That'll be great.
I noticed that Ms. Neely advises you in the packet materials that you asked Town Council to advise me whether you think an open meeting law violation technically occurred here. I would ask you not to look at this matter quite so narrowly, I don't know what happened beside, behind the scenes here, and I hope to find out tonight what happened, but whether what happened here was technically an open meeting law violation, or simply an ultra-virus act apart from the open meeting law, what happened here was, in my opinion, wrong and inimical to your attempts to protect your constituents in March of this year from precisely something like this happening. What happened here was a rush of a process that you tried to slow down. What happened here was funding for an inadequate environmental assessment that Mr. Terry Whalen told you on March 16th was less than what the public wanted. What happened here was funding for an environmental assessment before the master plan for the airport is even completed and we even know the full extent of what has to be studied. And finally, what happened here was a request for funding for an environmental assessment that your newly constituted Airport Commission did not even get to review and opine about. I want, if you want to simply inform me that based on credible facts, that you have decided that this regrettable action does not technically constitute an open meeting law violation, I want you to know that I have no intention of pursuing the open meeting law aspects of this matter further. I frankly don't have the time or the desire to pursue an adversarial open meeting law complaint against the town that I call home, but what I'm asking you to do tonight is to protect the people of Chatham the way you attempted to do in March of this year. I would urge you to take advantage of Condition Number 6 in the September 3rd Agreement with the FAA to turn the clock back to March with respect to any request for an environmental assessment, and if you would prefer, please consider taking advantage of 940 CMR Section 29.059H, which is a section of your state regulations which is on your website, and it states, "Nothing in this section shall prevent a public body or complainant from seeking mediation to resolve any complaint." If you prefer, rather than rule on whether what happened here was technically an open meeting law violation, which might do nothing more than trigger a reaction from your constituents, which is less than complimentary, why don't we just sit down at a mediation table? I'll sit more than 15 feet away from you, or we can do it via Zoom, and let's try to mediate a solution for what the people of Chatham would like to have done with this contract, which will allow me to withdraw my open meeting law complaint, I'd love to withdraw it. All I want to do is effectuate what you said you wanted to do in March of this year at three board meetings and are reflected in your minutes, and this contract, which the town manager signed on September 3rd, I've checked the minutes assiduously, this contract was never approved by you, nor was it approved by the Airport Commission, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you.
Thank you, Jim. I'm sorry, I was muted, thank you, Jim. We're gonna go to the next, a person wants to speak during the business agenda comment period, and that's Elaine Gibbs. Elaine?
Yes, thank you, I'm not sure where this fits in, I would hope that I'd be able to comment now because it wasn't on the agenda, but in terms of the Main Street sidewalks and Lawrence Lynch, if, is that okay if I comment?
Yeah, we had decided we were gonna allow it during public comment, so yes.
Oh, thank you very much, I appreciate it. I have some concerns, I'm not sure what the RFP process is, but Lawrence Lynch is, this is new data that they're going to be digging up Main Street, but Lawrence Lynch was also supposed to start at the beginning of this week on Cross Street and Vineyard Avenue, and they're doing West Chatham. There are, and that's all I know about, but there could be more, I'm not sure how many separate contractors they have or, or work teams to be able to do this, but they have not been on Cross Street, that needs to get done before the end of the year, and now Main Street and West Chatham. I, I would hope that there is some kind of coordination by DPW to figure this out and make sure it's all gets done before the winter sets in. I, I mean, when you've got Cross Street, which is like a major road onto Main Street, which is a major road, and they're all gonna be dug up, or maybe not, this has to get done, so I would hope that we can put that on a future agenda or maybe, you know, talk about that at some point. My other issue that I'd like to talk about is, I, I'd like to comment about Stephen Buckley's C4, which is talking about work groups that are outside of the open meeting law. I think when taxpayers, this is my take right now, when taxpayers are paying for consultants, as they did for the Council on Aging, they do on affordable housing and all that kind of stuff, to have task force, task forces or work groups that are not subject to the open meeting law, where no minutes are taken, where the public is not allowed, when there is no video, I have a serious, serious problem with that. I was on this task force for the Council on Aging, I think Pomeroy was, we, we paid him $200,000 between 1610 and the stepping stones, and there was absolutely no accountability there beyond who was in the meeting, the only minutes came, and they weren't minutes, it was a summary by the consultant, and some of them were two, three, or four weeks later. I think that we have got to acknowledge that if we're spending this kind of money, at least one of those three has to take place, either the public should be allowed to attend, they don't have to speak, there have to be minutes taken, or there has to be video, this is not a way to have transparency in this town of 6,000 people, when we're spending the kind of dollars we are in consultants, it's, it's just not right, and I don't know how you can reconcile that or suggest that that's appropriate, when a small group of people can be making decisions that affects the entire town. So I hope as you go through with this discussion that you think about that, I think Steve Buckley's on to something here, I think it's really important that the public has some kind of access to this information, I do think it's a violation of the open meeting law, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Stephen, I know that you're, you're scheduled into the Citizens Agenda Request, did you want to speak now or do you want to speak during that time period?
I prefer to speak then, that's what my question was, whether to speak now or later, so I'll, I'll wait.
Okay, you're posted into the agenda. Alright, any other folks want to weigh in during the public comment time on any of the matters we're discussing in the business agenda? Okay, I don't see any, nobody's speaking up, okay. Alright, so our first order of business is a meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and this is a discussion of the Affordable Housing Trust Membership Appointments and the Market Rate Trust, and this is a continuation of a conversation we started on the 22nd of September. I just want to take a roll to see if our other trustees are on the call. Megan, are you here, or is Bruce Bean here? Megan Story or Bruce Bean, are you present? Let's see them. Shawna, do we have a quorum to discuss this, right, with the four of us?
We do, they both indicated that they were available, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, let's see where they are. Okay, well, we need to proceed, so we're going to, and hopefully they'll either jump in or, or weigh in. Okay, so just as a matter of background, we did talk about this at our 22nd meeting, but I want to go back a little bit because I want to clarify, and we do hear a lot of that we haven't been doing enough, and we have, you know, and I, I've said this before, that we've been doing a slow deliberate sort of structuring of, of our affordable housing stuff, and we started this conversation back in January of 2018 about affordable and attainable housing planning and implementation, and I think Chairman Metters, it was Chairman Metters that set the agenda item and the discussion that ensued on February, I think it was like 5th or something of 2018. We had a lot of feedback from many in the community, including people that were part of the housing advocacy world, weigh in on a, a lot of, of what we wanted to do, and this is after a lot of folks had attended either a hack or a CDC workshops on affordable housing, and it was really important that we move forward and bring plans together through a thoughtful and deliberate process, and it was a general agreement among the board that it was important that this topic be, be addressed thoroughly. So one of the suggestions was that I had said that we needed to modify the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and, and make its use more flexible, and it sort of take a, a stock of things. So, you know, we've done quite a bit in the last year and a half, even with COVID, we've modified the production plan, we've hired a housing coordinator, we've attained new property for the MCI program, you know, staff has worked on potential concept pieces for, for potential projects that could have gone forward, we've adopted ADU, this is just a next step in some of the work that we've done this fall, which was inventory and town property, consider and issue RFPs for land and a housing consultant, and so when we talked about changing the affordable housing guidelines, right now, it would be to change the makeup of the appointments, and it's not to issue sort of a, make a bureaucracy, but sort of take a little bit of the onus off of the Board of Selectmen in its entirety and shift it into a group that is representative of advocacy and could meet more often and work on the idea of changing some of the trust fund guidelines to work on, so that we can create a market rate funding for, for attainable housing. This broader group would, could meet more, as I said, more often, and get a lot of work done. So I just want to put it out there that I had, had suggested last time that we change up the makeup of the board, continue this, the, the funding, the trustees, to have representation from some of the committees in town, have two selectmen, and then keep the existing people that are of, from the community there because they are representative of some of the stuff that we've worked on, I mean, some of the committees, but also to add to that three at-large community members, and, and hopefully that we'd be able to solicit people that were really, really, have been vocal in wanting to get some work done with affordable housing in the town. We do have a lot of armed cheer quarter backing in Chatham, and people have good intentions, but we'd like to see this committee become more active in its role and work closely with the Community Housing Partnership people and with us. So saying that, I just want to throw it out there, this is a process that would have to be approved by town meeting, so this is just the thoughts going forward, and I see Dean's got his hand up already, so I've said my piece. Dean?
Thank you, Madam Chair, yeah, I read the memo that Shawna prepared, and as you outlined, the proposal for revising the composition of the Affordable Housing Trust, I, I think it's a good proposal and I'm very supportive of it. Obviously, as you said, it would have to be a, a bylaw change presented to town meeting in May, but I, I think it's a good one, and I'd be prepared to support a motion on that tonight to get the ball rolling on that. The other piece of the memo talks about, or I guess it's in the agenda item, talks about creating a second trust for market rate housing, and we had some discussion of that at a previous meeting, and I, I'm supportive of that as well, I guess that would require some sort of a, an organizational document that would be presented to town meeting in the same manner that this one was founded. The, the key issue there is funding for it, because we can fund the Affordable Housing Trust, it's now out of general revenues or community preservation funds, and we've gotten significant increases in the CPA funding, I'd like to see more CPA funding devoted to affordable housing. I think Alex will confirm that we can't use CPA funds for market rate housing, so that being the case, we need to think about where that revenue contribution comes, and I think I intimated in the past, I'm not in favor of earmarking general revenues or general receipts like hotel motel tax, but I certainly would support the application of CPA funds if we could get a special act with the legislature to enable the town of Chatham to use some of those funds, it's a million dollars a year approximately that comes into town from, from CPA, and I know that in recent years, beyond the, the subject of affordable housing, the, the Community Preservation Committee has reached out and solicited applications for, for projects, as though they need to go begging to find people to spend the taxpayers' money, which leads one to think we could do one or more, one or another two things, we could do what we did with the land bank, and we gave the taxpayers a, a break, and I was very happy on my tax bill, which, by the way, Alex, I still have not received from the town of Chatham, but I paid it, thanks to your assistance, but I was happy to see the 50% reduction in the land bank tax that we gave to the taxpayers, and we could do that with the CPA funds or CPA surtax, or we could leave it at 3%, which I would favor, and, and take a piece of that and use that to fund the, I'll call it the attainable housing trust. So those are my suggestions, but I think you're moving in the right direction, Madam Chair, and I'm very supportive of what you want to do, thank you.
Thank you, Dean, I'm not sure who had their hand up first, so I'm just gonna go-
Cory.
Cory, go ahead, thank you.
No, no, I mean, don't I have a tremendous amount more to add than Mr. Slap in the Car-
No, I mean, I don't have a tremendous amount more to add than Mr. Sleckman Nacastro just added. But my only question is on the makeup proposal. It says a member of either the Planning Board or Zoning Board of Appeals, any thought of maybe having a member of each and then maybe reducing them at large to two? Or I'm just trying to think of how we distinguish or determine which of the two boards. I mean, we're assuming there will be a member of each of those boards that wants to step forward to do this. But if both those committees have been called out, and I can understand why they would have their input, you know, maybe have a member of each is something I would throw out there for consideration, so.
Okay. Great. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm supportive as well. I agree that a broader group would bring more focus, more efficient approach, I think, and probably get more done with that kind of focus. I don't think we have the time or the bandwidth as a Board of Selectmen per se and don't really spend enough time on issues of affordable housing. So I'm supportive, Madam Chair. I'm supportive of your leadership and your interest and your ongoing interest. And, you know, I'd have a couple nominees, but I won't do that, I guess, this evening. But I agree with Corey. I was struck, kind of choose between the Planning Board and the ZBA. They both bring a lot of value. I kind of lean towards the Planning Board, but I think both would be very useful on this committee. So I would support that notion. I also would note that this group's getting rather large. And, you know, I think that's good. I think broad representation is what we need to bring even more focus and more energy. So anyway, I'm supportive. I'm also supportive of using CPA funds. I've said it before, I'll say it again. I think it's a no-brainer. I think at times we cast about looking for projects to use the $1 million or so CPA funds. And I think taking some portion of those monies and if not, the vast majority of those monies, and at least for a time period, a short time period or a time period that we decide or we sell the town on for affordable and attainable housing is a great idea. So I'm supportive. I would move on here. And I thank you for your energy and your interest. It's excellent.
Thank you. I know that Sleckman Nacastro has been instrumental in some of the work here as well. Just to weigh in a little bit, the reason why it was that came up as ZBA, it was because we'd already have a member on there, on our housing trustees. One of our housing trustees is a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals at this time. But, you know, Planning Board makes more sense. So perhaps the addition would be a good complement, especially when it comes to project planning and our bylaws and what can be done. But not just what this trust can do, but what they can bring from the trust back to the Planning Board and some of the needs of the community as well. So it might be a nice synchronized sort of scenario. Same with the community housing partnership representation as well in giving those thoughts. I guess for me, I understand Sleckman Nacastro's concern on the taxation issues and the general money. I was thinking of the short-term rental tax as being new money that we haven't really earmarked for anything at this time is maybe a possibility. I think there is a little bit of jazz around the cape that that money might be a good idea. But that's subject to our discussion later on as we put this together. Obviously, it'll be the will of what the people are going to want, I would have to say. The other component, I think, is if somehow we get the interest that we had a few years ago in the community working towards a private trust scenario. And that's not something we can solicit and say, you know, let's put that together. That's a community build. But if we got enough interest, again, that people are interested in building that, then somehow we'd need to put a component into this particular market rate that maybe that could accept funding through that source as well. I'm totally in agreement with the CPA avenue as well as that legislation. I look forward to discussing that. You know, the Director of Community Development's on the call, and I wonder if she has any thoughts about what we've been discussing tonight and what should be, obviously, if we endorse moving forward with this, you know, just a sort of a broad stroke of timeline and needs. Katie? Hi, Katie.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. So Ally and I, Ally Sabatino, the principal planner, and I have been thinking a lot about this. Our suggestion is that we reach out to Mass Housing Partnership. They tend to run a lot of Affordable Housing Trust trainings. And they've also put out some guidance on forming an Affordable Housing Trust. And that guidance came out after Chatham's municipal Affordable Housing Trust was formed many years ago. So Ally and I thought an appropriate next step would be to reach out to MHP and see if perhaps they would come and have a, you know, perhaps a training, even just with the board now, to understand what type of scenarios you could be looking at going into the future. So before we put the town meeting article together for a vote, you would have a little bit more information about how the trust would operate after, you know, after it was transitioned. So that would be, that's our recommendation at this point, is if you let us do, you know, let us do some background research and provide you additional information. And then we can bring it back as an agenda item and perhaps with a training as well through MHP. I think that would be beneficial for everybody.
Okay. That's great. Thank you very much. Any thoughts or any questions for Katie before? Okay. Do we want to make a motion to move forward with this? Or are we building consensus around the next steps, folks?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Dean?
Yeah, I think what Katie says makes a lot of sense. Let's, I don't think we need to make a motion tonight. I was about to offer one for trust revision. But it sounds like we would benefit from this input. So I would suggest that we have consensus to go forward in that direction. Let Katie come back with Jill and Ally and put something on our agenda for future action.
Agreed.
Corey, your thoughts?
I'm comfortable with that. Very comfortable with that.
All right, then that's what we will do. We'll move forward in that direction. I'm anxious to keep the ball moving as promptly as possible, understanding that everybody has a pile on their plate on a staff level. But this is great. Thank you very much. Okay, so our next order of business, sorry, I'm shuffling papers. I've promised not to do that, is the mooring management system surcharge processing fee and the recommendation from the Waterways Advisory Committee. I see Stewart's here. And it came back to us because of a response from our town council on whether this was a fee or not. Jill, do you want to give an overview of what we learned?
Well, sure. Two weeks ago, the Board of Selectmen endorsed the use of the online permitting management system as well as what we call the processing fee for those, for permit processing. We had differentiated this fee from the convenience fee, which would be charged to those folks who want to use a credit card fee. And that's a convenience fee that we have on many of our town permit fees. So since then, I had sought an opinion from town council about what the next steps are and what is defined as a fee. Since then, we have, I'm sorry, we have town council's opinion in the packet. He is joining us tonight on the call. And since then and today, and I know Chairman Hosmer's here, the Waterways Advisory Committee met virtually a 20-minute meeting that was very efficient to unanimously endorse using the online permitting management program as well as the processing fees. So we have endorsement on both sides. The question, if the board has a question, is whether such could have been accomplished as it has been, or was there a public hearing required as stated in a footnote in the Waterways bylaws? So as long as there's, I think what I'm reading from town council pad is that there's been disclosure about what this permit fee is. It would be applied to all permits, so the regular moorings and the wait lists as well, regardless of how you pay. And this essentially would save the town on having to procure that software directly. And that's all that I have. So I see there's a lot of people on this call, so I defer to anybody else. And again, you can't see if Pat Costello is on the call as well.
Okay, we know that Attorney Costello's here, Harbor Master, Stuart Smith. Mike, your title is mooring manager. Is that correct?
That is correct, Shereen.
Okay. And the chairman, Richard Hosmer from the Waterways. Is there any questions or thoughts from the Board of Selectmen or questions to anybody that's on the call? Dean?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I was the selectman who raised this question at the prior meeting. And then I had an email follow-up after Pat's initial response. And I just want to state for the record, my only interest in this was to make sure that this was being done in a way that would not be challengeable, successfully challengeable legally. I have no stake in the matter, and I certainly respect the work of Harbor Master and the mooring manager and the committee. I read Pat Costello's subsequent opinions. It would appear Pat had not seen that regulation footnote previously. And I certainly will defer to town council. I'm not town council, but I am an attorney. And if I were doing this on my own, I would have held a public hearing. I don't think it would have made a big deal to do it. But it wasn't held. We have the endorsement of the committee. The Harbor Master makes these regulations. And the Board of Selectmen has already taken one vote. If we need to take another vote tonight, I will certainly support it. But I just really wanted to clarify that on the record. I would have done a public hearing because I think that would have eliminated any conceivable challenge. But maybe that's boot, belt, and suspenders, belt and suspenders approach. But as town council says, you can call it whatever you want. It's like Justice Roberts. It's a tax, it's a non-tax, it's a tax. I agree with Judge Barrett on that issue, by the way. So I just want to state that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Any other questions or comments from the board? And then maybe Pat could weigh in afterwards. I see Jeff's hands up. Jeff?
Do you think we need to take a vote? I think we've already voted this once, have we not?
We voted it as we endorsed it. But we're charged with approving fees as well, so.
So I move approval of the fee.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Corey, okay. And Corey, your hand's up to comment or?
Yeah, maybe we're going to defer to Pat because I guess, you know, I'm very optimistic about this program. I think it's a good program. I think it's going to be something that's going to be beneficial to the town. I completely understand where Sleckman Nacastro is coming from, you know, belts and suspenders. My question for Pat would be, you know, have we protected ourselves to this biggest challenge that I don't want, what is really, I think, a very good thing for us, that we don't stumble on anything? So are we covering ourselves as properly as we need to be or we should be?
Hi, Pat.
Good evening, folks. Can you hear me? Members of the board, nice to see you. As I noted in the email and having read through all of the relevant provisions of general law, bylaw, the regulations, the newly adopted regulations, there are, I guess the best way to say it is a number of different ways to slice and dice this particular charge or fee. Clearly, under the bylaw, the Board of Selectmen have the authority to establish Waterways fees. The Harbor Master, on the other hand, has very compelling authority under Mass General Law and under our regulations and under the bylaws to determine the processes and procedures for the issuance of mooring permits. Where the two functions meet is, can vary tremendously based on the circumstances. My only concern initially was that, to the extent that this was considered to be a fee, to Dean's point, there is a footnote in the regulations, which I find somewhat odd, that calls for a public hearing. And number two, I was somewhat concerned about derogation from the Board of Selectmen's authority to establish fees. As we know, typically, a public hearing is called for or required by statute in many instances when public input is to be made on a determination, whether it be a quasi-judicial determination or what have you by a board. And in this particular case, the only thing that the Waterways Committee is really charged to do is consult with the Board of Selectmen pursuant to its fee-making authority. Now, the more I looked at the regulations, I noted a point that Dean had raised as well, that there are fees specifically codified and set forth in the regulations. And so the question then arises, well, if it's up to the Harbor Master to adopt mooring and some Waterways regulations pursuant to a public hearing before the Waterways Committee, are those fees that are technically incorporated into the regulation subject to a public hearing as well? That brings me back to the initial point I had. I don't think that the Board of Selectmen is mandated to convene a public hearing to fill out, fulfill its function of adopting fees. Yet by regulation and further by a footnote in a regulation, the Waterways Committee is to conduct such a hearing. In my view, I did find the Harbor Master's point that this is, in essence, a processing charge in conjunction with the establishment of a system for permitting the moorings. I think that's a very reasonable statement. And that being the case, I do think it would fall within his jurisdiction to adopt certain charges, if you will, to defray the cost of the mooring process. And in essence, that's what we're doing. I think by virtue of the fact that all interested town bodies here, the Board of Selectmen, the Harbor Master, the Waterways Committee are all on board with this program. They all support it. The Waterways Committee did conduct a hearing to render a recommendation to the board or to the Harbor Master in that regard. All are in favor of it. I am comfortable that the charge as such, which will not be presumably incorporated into the regulations, will not be deemed a specific fee for purposes of the public hearing section, can be assessed and can be passed on to users in the manner in which it's being adopted by the board tonight.
Jeff?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to amend my motion to say I move approval of the processing charge.
Bingo.
Okay. Do we have a second on that concurrent? Corey, okay, all right, all right, fine. Dean, your hand's still up.
Yeah, I put it up again. I just want to, I'm going to vote in favor of this, and I defer to what Pat just concluded. I suggest that, given the ongoing work in revising the bylaw by special counsel with the Waterways Committee and then the Harbor Master and the town generally, that perhaps the confusion that town council has identified as between the regulations and the bylaws could be referred to special counsel for some clarification and possible recommendations for revision if it hasn't already been done. And I'm looking at the chairman of the Waterways Committee. It seems to, maybe it has been done. But that would be my suggestion going forward. Thank you.
Great. Any other comments? Well, then why don't we take a vote on this? Unless Chairman Hosmer or the Harbor Master have anything they need to say?
Nope, I think we've cleared it up.
Clarified everything? Okay, thanks. All right, I'll take a roll vote. Stuart, you're not a selectman. You're a Harbor Master. Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay, all right, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening on the Waterways world. All right. Okay, our next item is the review of the open meeting law violation complaint of James Fulton to consider response. And so I just want to give some background to what the process is here. To let everybody know that what we've done, town council gives us a review of what our practices have been in the past. And he did, as he does every time we have an open meeting law violation or complaint come before us, that we are, we're supposed to distribute the that we are, we're supposed to distribute the copies of the complaint to the members of the Board for their review, which we have done. And the Board has 14 days from the date of receipt to meet, to review the complainant's allegations, take remedial action if appropriate, notify the complainant of the remedial action, and forward a copy of the complaint and description of the remedial action taken to the complainant. The Board must also or simultaneously notify the Attorney General that has responded to the complainant and provide the Attorney General with a copy of the response and a description of any remedial action taken. And while the Board may delegate responsibilities for responding to the complaint to another individual, like it must first meet, as we're doing right now, and vote so. So we're meeting tonight to review and to discuss and to vote to either issue a response to Mr. Fulton or authorize either Town Manager or Pat, Town Council to prepare a response on the Board's behalf for whatever we come up with. So let's have a conversation here, I guess, and then see where we go from here. So any comments from the Board before I turn it over to Pat? Anything? Or to Jill? Nothing? Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from Pat. Thank you, Shereen.
Okay, great. Anybody else? Pat? Did I do the overview okay? It was, okay, you're muted. Can you unmute yourself, please, Pat?
Got it. Sorry about that. No, you did. You summarized the procedures very well, Madam Chair. That's exactly where we are right now. The, as Mr. Fulton noted earlier tonight, I believe that the issue he has with the action complained of is more one of substance than open meeting procedure. As he noted earlier during his comments, whether it's an open meeting law violation or an ultraviers act is a good question, and that's a legal distinction that I think is relevant when it comes to filing open meeting law complaints under General Laws, Chapter 38. I believe upon review of the complaint that it relates more to a dispute relative to the basis and authority to enter into that agreement than it does to a procedural violation of the open meeting law. And that being the case, I believe that should the complaint based on the factual allegations that are set forth therein be filed with the Attorney General's Office, there's a very good chance that the Attorney General's Office will decline to take any action on it because it lies outside the scope of the procedural requirements of the open meeting law. Most notably, most significantly, the complaint references basically as the date of the open meeting law violation, 9/3/2020. And that's the date that the Town Manager executed the FAA grant agreement. My simple response to that particular allegation is that the Board of Selectmen and/or the Airport Commission, which is also named as a public body in the complaint, did not take any action on that date, which would constitute a violation of the open meeting law. And the mere fact that there may be a sentiment that the Board should have discussed this matter or should have taken action on this matter during the course of a duly posted open meeting is not the same as saying that the Board did, in fact, engage in such a meeting and violated the procedural requirements of the open meeting law. So in my view, while the merit of the allegations of the complaint from a legal or substantive basis can be debated and argued, I don't believe that it would rise to the level of an actionable open meeting law complaint for purposes of the Attorney General's Division of Open Government interceding in the matter and taking any follow-up action.
Yeah.
Thank you. Pat, does any of the Board have any comments or further discussion? Nothing? Jeff, your hand's up again. Go ahead.
So there's no formal violation of an open meeting law because we didn't discuss these issues in an open meeting. So I think I would just, you know, through the Town Manager and through the Chair, I would ask Pat to craft a response that kind of summarizes, you know, that sentiment. Now, there are other issues here, but the open meeting law complaint was filed addressing, you know, you know, it's kind of off the mark. We didn't, there wasn't an open meeting to complain about. So if I understood Pat correctly, and I think I did, so I would just ask, you know, with all due respect, that we ask Pat to craft a response that says just that. Thank you.
Corey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I'm in full agreement with Selectman Dykens on the mechanics of, you know, and he stated it very well. There was no meeting. There was no, you know, open meeting law violation. So for, I guess, step one of this conversation, I support, you know, having Pat craft something to respond to that appropriately. But I would like to say I do think we need to, obviously, at a future agenda, because it's not under the scope tonight, we need to start having a discussion about, you know, the airport. The Airport Committee needs to start meeting again. We need to start communicating because we've had some pretty hearty meetings back, you know, six, seven months ago, before this whole pandemic kind of shifted things around. And there were so a lot of strong feelings, a lot of statements made. And I think this Board needs to start, you know, being part of the, you know, process of discussing certain, you know, things. And I'd like to get back on track on that relatively quickly. I know Peter's not out tonight, but I wish he could be able to chime in as the liaison to the Airport Commission. But I would like to start having these communications or conversations between us and the Board and the Airport Commission and the public relatively sooner than later. But as far as this open meeting complaint, I have no issue with, you know, dismissing it and take that off the table and move forward with some strong conversations with the public in the short term.
Thank you, Corey. Dean?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too support delegating to Pat the response under the open meeting law. When I saw the complaint come in and read it, even though it is styled as an open meeting law complaint, it, to me, doesn't recite anything as cognizable as a violation of the open meeting law as to the Board of Selectmen. Because that law deals with the notice requirements, the documentation of business requirements in the form of minutes or the conduct of the open, of an open meeting and the bar against the deliberative action outside of the open meeting context. But none of that is articulated, as even Mr. Fulton seemed to suggest. The real underlying issue is whether the contract was signed ultraviers beyond the authority of the Town Manager. And that's something I certainly would fear Selectmen Matters' suggestion that the Board might want to consider that at some future meeting. I too also think it is very important that the Airport Commission start meeting again. The Board of Selectmen, in its most recent round of committee appointments, appointed a new person to that Board, who I think was reflective of the community surrounding the airport. And in fact, the other two members were, that were reappointed, were people that are neighbors of the airport. So I think it's really important that they weigh in on the underlying issue as well. I mean, I agree that the Board of Selectmen, as the primary body in the town, which is the sponsor of the airport, has an oversight role here. But I also want to be respectful of the role and responsibility, frankly, of the Airport Commission under state law. And we've indicated to them what direction, we've suggested to them the directions that they should be going with respect to the plan update. And, you know, I think they should have an opportunity with their newly reformed constituency on the Board to proceed in that direction. So I just really want to make sure we keep those distinctions true and in place. But I would suggest that the appropriate action tonight is a narrow one, to respond to the open meeting law complaint within the 14-day period through our Town Council, as he has articulated. Thank you.
Thank you. Just before we go to a motion on this, Jill, do you know the, is the Airport Meeting Committee meeting soon? Commission meeting soon? Do we know?
I think they're looking at the, either the last week in October, first week in November, so to coordinate that with the members.
So they are on board to meet? Okay, good. So that will help us with our planning and what we need to address. Jeff? You are muted.
Yeah, thanks, Shereen. I move that we direct our Town Council, Pat Costello, to respond to the open meeting law complaint, expressing the sentiments that were voiced by the Board of Selectmen this evening.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Okay, I see that the complainant has his hand up, and it's out of our, we are discussing our next steps with this complaint, and we have a motion to take an action. So if Mr. Fulton has a response to the motion that we're taking, then I will allow him to speak. But other than that, he can further make comments in the public comment section after our business agenda. Mr. Fulton?
Yes, I do have a response to the motion. Mr. Costello is going to prepare a response to me. And the response has to be based on two things. It has to be based on law, and it has to be based on facts. Up till now, no one has said what the facts were here. If Ms. Goldsmith signed this contract because she got a phone call from Donald Trump telling her to sign this contract on September 3rd, there is no meeting, open meeting law violation. But if Ms. Davis and Mr. Metters and Mr. Dykens went out to lunch at the Cream and Cone and decided after their lunch that they would telephone Ms. Goldsmith and tell her to sign this contract, then you do have an open meeting law violation.
Mr. Fulton, you're deliberating, and this is about the actions we're taking moving forward. So I'm going to say that if we have issues with the Town Manager, we will take those up. If there's a problem with the process, we will take those up. Right now, this is in response to us filing, having the, our Town Council issue a response to your open meeting law complaint. This is not a time to deliberate it.
But is there ever going to be a time that Ms. Goldsmith is going to tell us how her decision to file the application in May and sign the contract on September 3rd came about, and who directed her to do it?
This has nothing to do with that open meeting law violation. And I think that Attorney Costello has made it perfectly clear, and we will issue a response. And then we will move forward with any issues that need to be taken up after we hear from the Attorney General.
I understand that, but I don't think Mr. Costello, very respectfully, can draft a credible response unless he says, "Mr. Fulton, I know the facts here, and I know that three Selectmen did not go have lunch at the Cream and Cone and decide to tell Ms. Goldsmith to sign this contract. Let me tell you how it happened."
Thank you. All right, we're going to take a vote. Jeff? You're muted. I need a voice vote.
That would be an aye.
Okay. Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. All right, we'll move forward. Thank you.
Shereen?
Shereen, you're muted. So I mute myself, right? All right, thank you, everyone. We're going to move on to our next agenda item for discussion, which is the Citizens Agenda Request for Clarification of Working Groups Task Force Exempt from Open Meeting Laws. And this was an agenda item request made by Citizen Stephen Buckley. I'm not sure where we're going to kick this off. Jill, is this for, do you want to give an overview of this? Or do we hear from Stephen first? We also have Town Council on.
Yeah, I would suggest that we start with Mr. Buckley's agenda request, and then when he had suggested that before, I had said that I would consult with Town Council, and I thought this would be a good opportunity since he's on the meeting.
Okay, great. We need whoever is not muted to please mute and disable your videos so that we can continue our meeting. And then we'll move on to the business at hand. Thank you. Stephen?
Welcome. I'm sorry, I unmuted myself. And then I failed to remember that when I was clearing my throat. So Mr. Fulton should not be faulted for anyone else. I apologize. And I'm going to show my face, too. So here we go. Okay, yes, I had some concerns about the propriety, or legality, I guess, of task forces that had been set up by the Town Manager. And as Elaine Gibbs said before, there had been one set up to review the adequacy or evaluate the Council on Aging site proposed for Stepping Stones Road. And when I heard about that, and I forget, in the beginning of the year, whenever that was, it struck me that it, like, why isn't this? Using Microsoft Teams, I was wondering why it wasn't being public. And so anyway, I attended some open meeting law, excuse me, training that the Attorney General's Office actually mandates, I guess, for committee members, and I am appointed a committee member. So I do keep up, and people know that I'm a big fan or a big advocate of open government. So during one of those education sessions, one of those webinars, there was something that came up about the fact that there is a loophole, if you want to call it that, that allows for a mayor or a Town Manager or so forth to set up an advisory group or task force or whatever, to be able to say, gee, if you're the Town Manager, you can say, "I'd like to know more about, I think I need to be smarter about shark monitoring," or whatever. And she can, or he can, consult anybody they want. They can pick up the phone and say, "Please educate me about this." Or you can, if you're the Town Manager, set up a group to advise you all at the same time. You know, a number of, more than one person at a time. You can set up a group like that. And so there was actually a Supreme Judicial Court decision that allows for that to happen. Simply a matter of, you know, that simple way. But as my understanding is that if someone instructs, if the City Council or Board of Selectmen instruct the Town Manager or whomever mayor to create such a group, then that is considered a public body then, and essentially becomes almost a subcommittee of the Board. So unprompted, yeah, okay. Prompted, not okay. So that seems to be the line. And so rather than bring this up in June, when everybody was trying to do something about the Main Street, you know, the, I thought I'd be discreet and wait so that, because if I had brought up a complaint then, and I prefer the word concern over complaint, that, that, yes, I have many friends who have businesses on Main Street, and they might not appreciate my advocacy for open government and look at that as somebody getting in the way of having to deal with COVID and the summer season and so forth. So I just wanted the Board to appreciate, and everyone to appreciate that. I thought it would be better to raise it as a matter of concern afterwards and not be forever remembered as the person who screwed up. and not be forever remembered as the person who screwed up Main Street for West Chatham during pandemic. So that's that's about it. And I would I had a, after you all have spoken, I guess, I did have a follow up comment, a big picture comment that I wanted to make. So thank you.
Okay, Stephen, thank you. Does the board want to weigh in or do we want to hear from Pat? Seems that my understanding of working groups are to aren't to make any decisions, but to create, you know, to move things forward and create some recommendations usually that are on project or to have, you know, have us better make a decision. So but I want to hear from Pat on what his takeaway on it. And I have Corey's hand up and Jeff's hand up. And then we'll see where we go. Jeff, Corey first?
No, I mean, I'd like to hear what Pat says, but I mean, to me, this kind of seems almost like a like a policy question. You know, I I understand the distinction between the two, you know, I would, you know, I would be perfectly fine with requiring, you know, postings of these meetings minutes at the very least. I would not support the videos because of recording. Because I mean, think about it, a lot of these working groups do on sites, you know, the downtown working group, they go downtown. So I'm not gonna have a video crew coming down there videotaping on the Main Street. But, you know, I think some of this comes down to a policy question and having some kind of minutes at the very least to understand what happened, who was there, who participated, what type of input was provided, wouldn't necessarily be a bad tool moving forward. But that's just that's just my initial thoughts.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, same here. I think a task force or working group has a beginning and an end. They have a goal of making a recommendation and it's a discreet group that does not have has not long lived and has no staying power with, you know, terms of the bylaw. So I'd like to hear from Pat as well, but I think at a minimum, minutes should be required. And I'd like to hear from Pat. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dean.
Yeah, I'm not sure I agree with my colleagues here. I, you know, I think you have to look at the effective efficient functioning of the town government and creation of task forces or let me use the working group appointed by the by the town manager provides an opportunity for ongoing in real time consultation and recommendations to her that she then, if she decides it's worth it, brings back to the Board of Selectmen. And I certainly, I certainly want to be educated further on this topic by by town council, but I don't initially jump in with the notion that we should be encumbering these working groups with the coudaments of town meeting as, I'm sorry, of public, open meetings as articulated by the legislature for public bodies that are a defined term in the statute. So I think we should hear from town council.
I agree with you, Dean. I think that, you know, the efficiency of of a working group is to do just the work, get it back to us. They're not making any substantive decisions. They're making recommendations. We can always ask how they achieve that. So Pat, you want to weigh in on what what you know?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Mr. Buckley's summation of the present statutes and regulations was was very good, very concise. I think that historically, the way the open meeting law has been interpreted and implemented by the the state authorities that supervise it is that if a body is serving at the behest of an individual town officer and reports directly to that officer, takes its charge from that particular officer, it is not deemed to be subject to the open meeting law. On the other hand, if the charge for formation of the group, our task force, comes from another public body, then it does in fact have to comport with the requirements of the open meeting law. So the generation, if you will, of the charge and the basis for the constitution of the task force or working body is the ultimate determining factor as to whether the OML will apply. Obviously, when you have a body that is specifically charged and constituted by a charter provision or a bylaw or a statute or a town meeting vote in most instances, that will be deemed to be a public body because it has its imprimatur or its its genesis and the vote of a government document that in essence has created a public body. Where, however, the the town manager or the mayor of a city wish to establish a group of advisors or a committee to provide him or her directly with advice, that's where that committee's charge ends, when it provides the recommendation, information or advice to the town officer. Thus, it does not run the full gamut of going back to another public body and thus forcing our compelling compliance with the open meeting law. Now, that's the way it's not only the, you know, the the regulations in the statute read somewhat hazily, but that's how it's been interpreted in in open meeting law determinations and so forth. And I do think that it to Corey's comments, I mean, this does to some level involve a policy issue, even though that is the state of the law, there's nothing that would preclude the town, should it deem it appropriate and advisable, to establish its own set of protocols and rules for these task force or advisory committees, ad hoc committees, by bylaw or by virtue of policies or regulations adopted by the Board of Selectmen, for example, on matters that are within its jurisdiction. You could require that there be some level of meeting minutes maintained or other records of the deliberations and actions of this particular subcommittee. That's entirely up to the board to decide on an individual basis. However, to the extent that the town manager, as the chief administrative officer of the town chooses to seek the advice or input of of various consultants or groups, that is entirely prerogative and it is entirely legal at this juncture.
Thank you, Pat. Dean, your hands up. Did you have further comment?
Yeah, I have a question for Pat. So, Pat, just to give a specific scenario, the Board of Selectmen has an agenda item to consider the location of a senior center in town. And in the course of their discussion, they make a suggestion or individual members make a suggestion or there's a consensus suggestion to the board, to the town manager, that she might convene a working group that reports to her, that is assembled according to her own determination as to who who is on this group. Is that is that body subject to this open meeting law?
That's probably as close as you're gonna get to the line as you possibly can because the 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 apparent intent of the board's directive to the town manager is that that group would not only report back to her, but that that group's findings or recommendations would ultimately be provided to the Board of Selectmen. So if the Board of Selectmen initiated the charge to assemble that body, then I would suggest that that's a, that would be a body that that should be public, should be subject to the open meeting law as an advisory committee to the Board of Selectmen, notwithstanding the fact that the town manager would have been charged with selecting the the individuals to serve in that particular body.
No vote from the board. You direct her to do that?
Well, if there's no vote from the board and she ignored your request, I guess she would do so at her apparel. However, if the concept or the 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 thought of assembling a group of multiple individuals to provide input into a matter that is within the board's jurisdiction, came directly from the board, whether it be by suggestion or vote, I would be cautious in that regard and would likely suggest that body should comport with the open meeting law.
One last question. What if the town manager comes to the board and says, I'm considering appointing a task force? And the board says, hey, that's a great idea. They don't take a vote. We'd like to hear the, we'd like to hear the results when when it's done.
Again, if it was, if the constitution of the body was initiated by the town manager and that body is requested and anticipated to report solely to her, then I think it's okay. So again, there are fine distinctions involved here.
I realize that. But we press you with one further question. So she does that. He initiates it. She, she has a report to her. Now she comes to the Board of Selectmen and says, this is what my working group has come up with. This is the recommendation they've made to me. We should put the senior center at 1610 Main Street. And this is what it's gonna look like and what it's gonna cost. And I'm gonna call on the consultants that I use to to elicitate for you, the Board of Selectmen, what they've come up with. Does that work?
I think it would. I think that would be okay because what what we have there is a situation where the town manager and her role as chief administrative officer of the town has elicited input from other individuals, it was provided to her, then she, as an individual town officer, is in turn relaying those findings to you, your board as the chief executive authority. Since your board did not request that that body be constituted or assembled, I think you're okay there.
Thank you.
Interesting.
Okay. All right. Any further comments? Stephen, you said you had some more comments?
Right. And I guess it speaks to something that, Corey, or anyway, or maybe Mr. Costello said about policy. I mean, I had brought up the idea of a public body, call it a communications committee, whatever you want to call it, the idea being that when questions come up about, like, like the previous issue on tonight, about the airport commission and the open meeting, this, I'm asking that there be some group that could advise the town, short of consulting an attorney, the town council, short of that, that's not the town manager, that's not the town council, but access and advisory on all matter of communications, including open meeting law, open, you know, the the conduct of public bodies of advisory committees on when task, for instance, in this case, when task forces need to comply, when they don't need to comply. And then we don't have to bother the Attorney General. We don't have to consult with an attorney. We don't have to do. So that's just another example, I think, of where we can solve this in house. And like I said, I considered filing a complaint, but I decided that it would be better to just raise a concern and have a discussion and talk about it and wait. Because like I said, there was a lot of a learning curve about technology and so forth and so on. And I said, I'll just stand back and let this go forward and I won't make any, I don't, I don't want to make any enemies of friends that I have. So, or at least non friends. So anyway, it could be, depending on what the board decides to do or not to do, I may still get some clarification from, it may help, I think, to get some clarification from the Attorney General's Office so that they can clarify. As a matter of fact, I did get an email from them. I'll forward it to the town manager and she can do with it, share with it as she wants. And but it just reinforces what I believe town council says that the loophole here is not as big as I think the Board of Selectmen thought it was. Thank you.
Okay, Stephen, thank you. Pat, thank you for the for the input, both this and the last agenda item. I neglected to thank you for your for your input tonight. Is there any further discussion that the board wants to take up on this matter? Moving forward, it always can be a continuing conversation, obviously. Dean?
Yeah, I just would say that Pat has given us some elucidation tonight. I think it's sufficient information that we can use, that the town manager can use, the Board of Selectmen can use going forward, when the thought of creating these committees or when when you do pass the threshold such that it's a public body because the Board of Selectmen initiated it, then it then it has to follow the protocols that are set forth in the statute and the regulations. When it doesn't fall beyond that, when it doesn't cross that threshold, then it's a working group. And if the town wants to consider, if the Selectmen want to consider protocols for that wording group, working group that and it might enhance transparency, then we can consider that. That's, that's my thinking. I don't think we need to take any formal action tonight. I, Stephen, for bringing this forward because I learned something tonight I was not aware of, but I haven't researched, I hadn't researched the case law on the topic. And it's been a while since I was advising a city on on the open meeting law. But and a lot has happened in that in that intervening period. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Jeff?
Yeah, I'd just like me to cast her to summarize my thoughts as well. I thought Pat Costello's comments were very helpful, enlightening. And I think we can move forward in the in the correct manner, if you will, with respect to the open meeting law. But very useful, enlightening. Thank you.
Corey, any additional thoughts?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Stephen. It was enlightening and we appreciate always citizens' requests for agenda items. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to our next agenda item, which is the last one of the night for the business section of our meeting. And it was the Cape Cod Climate Action Plan Municipal Meetings designated Chatham as representative. Apparently, this meeting is tomorrow. Jill?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So, yeah, this is a request by the
Non friends.
Stephen, yours, hold on just a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Mute, please. Thank you. All right. Go ahead, Jill.
Okay, so this Cape Cod Climate Initiative is a new, a new initiative with the Cape Cod Commission. And they would like to meet with municipalities and hear from them directly. And they've asked if we could designate members of the community, including staff, to serve. It's sort of, it's a working group focused group. We've done this with our municipal vulnerability, sorry, plan before, when we've done some tabletop exercises to give the consultants some input for which would be similar to this. So they're looking for five or six members. They would like an elected official to participate and that would be you to designate that. I've designated Dr. Bob and Katie Donovan to serve and they'll participate on the meeting tomorrow. And I have the agenda in the packet and it's a Zoom meeting. And if there's anyone else you want to select to participate, I think, I'm not sure Sean is still on the call, there was some outreach potentially to the Chatham environmental, what is it, environmental? No, the one that Peter Kukulas used to be the chairman of. Anyway, so we're looking to see if you have any, any suggested representatives to participate on the meeting.
Thanks, Jill. Jeff, your hands up. Go ahead.
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't make it. I think it's might be kind of tough with such short notice, Jill. But Ted Kean, I think, would be a good person to 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 sit on this. Maybe not permanently, but I think he has a unique perspective on the challenges of of the climate and what challenges it's bringing in terms of our shoreline vulnerabilities.
Thanks, Jeff. Jill, I, this is stuff that's right up my alley, but I'm, I'm really pressed hard on the work I've been doing for the community, especially with the COVID stuff. If we weren't in COVID, I would jump on it as a as a member of the committee, but I just can't take one more thing on. There was some outreach. Perhaps we should be reaching out to the Friends of Pleasant Bay or the Friends of Chatham Waterways to see if there might be some interested members there. I did hear from the vice president of one of them today, who expressed he asked if we were looking for community members. And so there is, perhaps we could find some interest. They're pretty active groups. The other person that I think might work out The other person that I think might work out well, might be somebody if, if Ted can't do it, is perhaps a shellfish constable. They're dealing with climate change issues. Perhaps there's another environmental group representative that lives here from the Center for Coastal Studies or Woods Hole that might want to jump in on this. I think we need to do some community outreach to find some designees. So, but for, for one of us, I, I would really love to do it. I just simply cannot at this time. So any other thoughts from anybody else?
No, I thought all those suggestions were good ones, Shereen.
Okay.
Those were all good.
Okay. So I, I think it would behoove us, and I know Peter isn't here to speak whether he'd be interested in this or not. I wouldn't want him to commit to anything that he's, you know, but I think he'd be an excellent, excellent one of us to, to jump on that unless, unless Corey or Dean have some interest in it. But I think our job right now is to probably go out to the community and find for Jill a few more members of our community. Chatham is on the forefront of a lot of this. We are ground zero, and this is really important work for the community to do, to be involved in. We have so much we can offer and we have so much experience. And I mean, Dr. Dunkinson is one person that really, that brings a lot of experience to the table on this, having worked in the community for over 30 years, almost 40 years now, and addressing the issues of coastal and climate change. So I hate to get on my soapbox, but I, it really excites me. So I guess we need to get some work done here. Dean?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jill, is this an ongoing commitment? Or, I mean, they're talking about a meeting tomorrow for the lower Cape. Is the person, are the persons who are going to participate in that session tomorrow, which is, there's no indication of how long it's going to last, but the agenda is quite ambitious. So I suspect it's going to take the whole afternoon.
Three hours.
Yeah, three hours. I'm not sure if this is just a one and done, or if there's going to be continued, continued input sought, which I would imagine from the individual communities. Yeah, unfortunately, you know, we got this just last week, so just trying to get everything scheduled. I could certainly have a strong staff presence added and report back. But I do know that the commission did want an elected member, so a member of the Board of Selectmen. And I'm just not sure if Selectmen Kukulis is available for the meeting tomorrow.
I suspect he's not. And, you know, I, I also suspect that, perhaps I'm not speaking for the other Selectmen, but if I were on it, I think I would be more window dressing to, to Dr. Dunkinson. Another, you know, I certainly support the initiative. I think it's shared, it's articulated. It's a really important thing. I'm not particularly fond of these facilitating type arrangements. As you know, Jill, because I've spoken with privately about them. But, you know, I, I think, you know, you mentioned their outreach to the Energy Committee. They're into this big time. Perhaps also somebody like Janet Williams, who's the, who's the Chair of the Conservation Commission, but it might be reached out to. But this is such short notice that, you know, I, I don't know why they're, they think that having elected officials on this is really that, that important.
Also, I think Frank Messina had, would, would express some interest. He does work with the Pleasant Bay Group as well. Also, yeah. So if, we need more information to see if this is an ongoing discussion. I imagine it is, but this is just a start of it. So I guess we can't give you
Do you want to designate a person anticipating that it's a continuing discussion or continuing meeting? Maybe it's a monthly thing. I'm not sure. Just so we don't have to come back to the board to get that designation?
Yeah. I mean, your thoughts, anybody?
I mean, I'd be happy to be that person, but I don't want to be there tomorrow.
That's fine.
You know, maybe Peter, when he comes back on the board, might, might want to substitute for that. But if they're looking for some ongoing presence from the elected officials of the town, I, I'd be willing to do it.
Thank you, Dean. Thank you. All right. Well, yes. So there, there's your public official designation. And we'll reach out to the community. You're looking for a handful of more people to volunteer for this from Chatham, correct?
We need a total of five or six. That's all right. So we have some staff designees. I had two without one elected official. Energy Committee is a great idea. That's the name I couldn't think of, the committee. And if there's others in the community that would be available. I, I just, I can't see this being a one and done thing, especially, I know the commission and they like to do like public outreach and make presentations to the community. So, but I don't have a lot of information other than what's in the packet.
Yeah. Could I just add? Yeah. If, if after tomorrow, if they can come up with some sort of more defined plan, what they want to do, tomorrow looks like this sort of blue skies type of discussion, only it's segmented into groups. I guess they're going to Zoom into different groups.
Yes.
Yeah, as opposed to rallying people into little rooms and then it's sort of, you get this serendipitous result of all these pieces being forged together from the creative minds that sat in these little, little rooms. If you wanted with you, I think I've said enough to trash the idea. I'm willing, if they, hopefully they're going to come up with something. And I have great respect for Christie Senatorium and the commission. And we have a commissioner. Is, is Tom Wilson into this at all? He's our commissioner. He's not an elected official. He's appointed one. But as, again, if they come up with, hopefully they're going to come up with some more defined ideas, what that they want to pursue and I'd be happy to participate on that ongoing basis. Unless Peter wants to take my place after he comes back.
Okay. I just want to check in with Shauna. Shauna, did you hear from anybody else?
The only other suggestion I would make would possibly be South Coastal Harbor Planning Committee. Someone, maybe the representative, a chair from that group.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion, too.
Okay, great. And we've got some very talented people in the community. We've got Kristin Andes, who's the head of the Alliance to Preserve Cape Cod. I mean, there's all kinds of folks that we can, I don't know if she's the head of it. She's part of it. That we could tap, probably tap into. We just need to do some outreach. All right. Thank you, Dean, for stepping up. That's a pleasure to, we'll look forward to your reports. This is a serious issue. All right.
Reports, I would hope.
Yes. Any further action on this item before we move on? No? Okay. Thank you, Jill. Okay. Our last order of business tonight is public comments. Again, these are comments related to the business agenda items. There is a five, you are allowed up to five minutes as a speaker to address any agenda items. So we have two people with their hands up. Do we have any of the people on the call? We don't have many. We don't have anybody on the call now, on, on call. So we have Elaine Gibbs and James Fulton. I'm not sure which one of you put your hand up first. So I'm just going to go down the line. So first that I see is Elaine Gibbs. Elaine?
Yes, thank you. I have comment on two agenda items. First is the Airport Commission. What I gather is that the Selectmen are going to say that they were not in violation because it was outside the scope of the open meeting law and a technicality, because the Airport Commission didn't have a meeting. That bothers, that's bothersome because we are in the middle of a pandemic. I think, I don't think anyone can feel that the town manager unilaterally signing a $347,000 contract with the federal government, the FAA, without any public input is appropriate. Mr. Fulton was not allowed to speak beyond the parameters of the actual open meeting law. And, you know, and my, my feeling is that's like a violation of the open meeting law for public participation. I don't think that Mass General Law anticipated circumventing the spirit of the law the way we have been doing. I, I hope we move further beyond this and find out why this happened and that it's, it's, it was inappropriate for this kind of thing to happen, particularly in light of the fact that the Airport Commission has been an issue in terms of not allowing public participation for the last year. So that's my feeling on that. I think that, I think there was an open meeting by law, law violation because it was a technicality. And I think we're better than that. In terms of the working groups, I had previously expressed I was on the Council on Aging Working Group. I think tonight it was said that working groups are for efficiency, not substantive. If they're not substantive, why do we have them? And that we're not making any decisions. We did make decisions. I, I was put on with two other members who are for stepping stones, and we're in the minority to begin with. And yet, when votes were taken, the majority won. So it was meaningless for us to be even beyond the group. You were using that to make recommendations. I think that was an, an end run around the open meeting law. When you're spending town money, that, that group cost over $200,000. We paid Palm Roy over $200,000 to have a consulting, meeting, working group. And yet, no public was allowed in there, no minutes were taken. And there, there was, there was, there was no record of it happening and no video. And I think that's inappropriate. When you charge and that the Board of Selectmen, this was not for efficiency. And this was not at the behest of, of the town officer. This was a decision made by the Board of Selectmen to put this out there and to put us in that room. And nobody knew what was going on. And I, and I think that's wrong. I think there, the threshold should be who's paying for it. And if the public's paying for it, we have a right to know what's going on in the meeting. I happen to be there, but I know that the, the notes that we're taking on that meeting were three, four, five weeks old. And they didn't, they did not, in my view, summarize what had actually gone on in the meetings. And the public has a right to know that. Decisions were made based on those meetings and who was in attendance. And that is a violation of the open meeting law. And anyone who says differently, I totally disagree with. So I hope you will look down the road. And if we are paying for those consultants, we absolutely have to have transparency so that the public, you don't have to have people in the crowd sitting out there participating, but they have to be able to see what's going on. And it should be videotaped. And if that costs $10,000, so be it. It's money well, well spent to be transparent. So, thank you.
Hello?
You're all muted for some reason.
Mr. Fulton, I'm sorry. You're next. And go right ahead.
That's all right. First of all, I'd like to thank you very much, Madam Chairman, for allowing me to speak tonight and for allowing me to ask a question and comment during your consideration of Item C3. I also want to commend Mr. Nacastro for his astute comments during the consideration of Item C3 on your agenda. I agree with him entirely. It is important, if, if this is not an open meeting law violation.
Oh, dear. Mr. Fulton, you've Oh, dear. Mr. Fulton, you've. I think that was Jeff. A second?
Second.
And that was Dean.
Yeah.
We'll take a roll call, and we'll start with Jeff.
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Okay, the meeting is adjourned. It's at 8:31. My apologies for the glitch. We'll, you know, this is pandemic time, and power outage just happened. So I just want to thank.